Order please, roll call.
All right. Margie Ferris here. Carla.
Yes.
Joe.
Here.
Sherry.
Here.
And Brian.
Here. Approval or amendments to the agenda?
Make a motion approve.
My second.
Anyone opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of amendments on May 21st, 2025? Or amendments if we have any?
I make a motion to approve. My second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from anyone opposed? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. This is probably the last time I can read this without my reading glasses, I swear. The Clay Township's ZBAA Primary addresses practical difficulty based on lot size, location, shape, or contour and/or location of existing buildings. We are guided by section 27.05 of ordinance number 126. There are five members on the ZBAA, four of whom are present tonight. At least three members must vote affirmatively for a motion to grant a variance. Three members constitute a quorum. Each appeal before the ZBAA will have a public hearing at which time the applicant will first present his or her case and a public comment regarding that issue will follow. During this time, members of the board may ask questions of clarification. If a particular point gets belated, the chairperson has the right to limit comments. When the public hearing is closed, the board will move on to the deliberation of the particular variance request. If the applicant should disagree with the board's decision, he or she has the right to take it to Circuit Court within 30 days of the decision. When your appeal hearing is concluded, you are welcome to leave or stay as you wish. We're going to open up new business. New business is JZBA 2025-004, applicant at 7780 Middle Channel Drive. Representative? Put your name and address, please.
Hello, everyone. I'm Anthony Chakuti, represent Middle Channel Marina at 7780 Middle Channel Drive. We're here today to talk about the four campsites we're looking to add to our marina. We're looking at adding four RV sites. We were looking to do the similar use on the planning commission as the RV sites and boats go hand in hand. We have a restriction with the 10 acres. With being on an island, as you guys know, we can't just go out and purchase more land or grow. So we're looking for a variance on the 10 acres and a few additional ones such as a temporary bathroom and Gary, do you mind? There's three variances that we've talked about. The buffering is, yes, sorry about that. And with the restriction of being on an island, we want to ask for those variances from you guys for the four campsites.
Okay. Go ahead, I have a seat. Did you say, did he say? I got his name. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Not yet. I'm going to open up to public comment. Please, yep, we have one letter too. Go ahead, just state your name and your address, please.
Liz Kirchhoff. We own the property at 7650 Middle Channel Drive.
Did you, did you write this letter?
Yes. My, my husband and I, yes.
Go ahead, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sure. So we own the property at 7650 Middle Channel Drive. It's directly next to the proposed RV site and we are opposing this variance request. So the property includes only 1.53 acres of land and about 175 feet of land width, far below the 10 acre and 600 foot minimum required. The applicant's references to waterfrontage are misleading as setbacks and lot width should be measured from land only and not include the water area. So this means the actual variances are needed are even larger than stated. They're requesting the major reductions in rear and side setbacks and have not addressed the required five-foot wall to buffer our property. On our, we're asking for the five-foot wall to buffer our property. So there wasn't, we didn't read anything about if there was going to be night lighting, but there should be some proposal for deflecting night lighting as required by the ordinance. And there were some lines for parking, but it wasn't really designated in the land, so that should be specified. They talked about a portable restroom and shower facilities and where, and it wasn't specified where those would be placed on the property. Additionally, this site also includes an unoccupied house. And so if that house were to be used for overnight stays, it would be five on that lot, which would then require additional strict state compound campground regulations under Act 368, Part 125. And there is no intended use of that empty house on the property. They mentioned that in there, so. So this isn't a minor request that they're asking for. It ignores multiple zoning requirements and lacks key information. So we're asking that this be denied.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? We have one letter from you. So you pretty much stated everything that you had in the letter. Okay, thank you. I'm going to close public comment. Gary, please. I'm sure we have questions for you first. Let's go with the site requirements. So 10, 10 acres is in our ordinance and they only have a total of 2, 286 acres, is that?
That's land and water. But the landowner, land only, only is 1.53 is what I came up with. And the lot width is 250 feet, which under recreation requires 600.
So we're, we're saying don't include the water.
What's that?
We're saying do not include the water.
Well, I'm just giving you both figures.
Okay.
So if you read what I had written, I tried to give you, did you read what I wrote for you guys?
No, I didn't see that.
Okay, that should be included in your, in your packet. Hope you have it. It was a plan review for ZBAA variance request.
That was with the, the files that she sent out?
Yeah, it should be in there.
Only got three, two files. Did you guys get that? I know you said that last meeting too.
No, because when I talked to Amber, she didn't.
I mean, this was an important piece of information that I wanted all you guys to have.
We have requirements, plan review.
Plan review.
Of course. So this one in front of the planning last month, that boils back to us?
This went to the planning commission. And the planning commission felt that where they thought that this was a good idea, they just thought that by making this a like use for recreation, meaning, you know, that it was a marina and, you know, where you can have overnight stays in a marina and you can have overnight stays in an RV, that it was just too open-ended, that it would be uncontrolled. So then every marina would be full of RVs. So, you know, that's why, you know, they said, well, there are these restrictions for recreational use. And that's why they said, well, there are some dimensional requirements that are not met in the recreational portion. And that's why they sent it to you to look at it from dimensional purposes. Now there's, this is not a done, even if you say yea, it's not done because it still has to go back to planning and talk about, you know, landscaping, talk about other things, you know, placements of different items on the lot. There's still site plan approval that would have to be done by the planning commission. They're coming to you for, to say, if, if it's possible, to look at, look to you for the dimension, the dimensional issues that they have that they don't meet in recreation under our ordinance. And that's the 10 acres, that's the 600 frontal footage, that's the setback requirements that, that are not met. I know that one of the things in performance standards, they were looking for, you know, just to, you know, kind of due to the nature of RVs and the equipment and the self-containment of them was to be exempt from that standard, but that's also up to you because most RVs come with their own, you know, bathrooms and facilities in them as do marine. But once again, totally up to you on, on that portion of it. They were, yes, they're asking for a maximum of four RVs.
Why not five?
Because then my understanding, and that's from the petitioner, that there was some Eagle requirements, then that might kick in, that would put them into a different standard that Eagle would have for them. And, and he may be better to answer that question for you.
And is the, the home that's on the island, is that going to be, do you know?
So if there, I mean, there is a home on there. Right now that home is not in use. Could that home be used under this zoning, under sea zoning? That home could be used. It could be used and really as a short-term rental, but, but it's not regulated under our short-term rental ordinance, but it could be, it could be rented out, you know, and, and I don't know if it would fall underneath this, under campground or, or come any part of this because it is in fact, you know, a permanent building. You know, these are RVs that, you know, are going to be regulated as far as their stay. You know, per the petitioner, there's a two-week stay, two weeks and, and the RVs go away. It's not like they're going to be growing roots or staying there for any extended period of time. But that house is a legal house, you know, it's, it's not being used right now, but I don't know if that included, can be included in this because it's not, it doesn't fall underneath either of these.
Well, that doesn't address anything. I don't want to say Elizabeth, but that she said about five.
Yeah.
That doesn't, that doesn't, that doesn't get him into the, the five. And I, I want that explanation from you as why you didn't go with 10. You know, why not fill up the whole parking lot? So that, I'll, I want that.
Yeah, that's a question for them, but the house is a permanent structure.
I don't want to jump because I want to hit one variance at a time, but the performance standard one, I get it that the boats have their own, but they always have at any marina, do you have, I'll ask him, a pump station. Is that something that's going to be required or is that up to us?
He can speak on that.
So that's him, okay.
So there is a plan in place.
Okay. Well, I read some of that. The water, the water line, the one-inch water line, has that been addressed? I saw Lance question that.
Lance has questioned it whether or not there's sufficient supply.
Is that going to fall onto us or is that going to fall onto the planning commission to make that decision?
That's going to probably fall under whether or not they have sufficient flow. Lance and, and the petitioner would have to work that out on whether or not there is enough pressure to meet the needs. And, you know, with, with, you know, for RVs, it, it may not be a big use, but, but I don't have the direct answer to that question.
Does the house have water in?
I, I've never been in it to know it, but I would assume it.
Well, according to the plan, it's going into the house, going to the RVs. My RV's up to, you know. Yes, it is going from the house to. Okay, let me ask him a couple questions here, I'll get you back out. Thank you. Anthony? Can, so let's. So I obviously I want to know why we didn't do five. What is the additional requirements that you would have needed to, or why, why didn't we do five?
So.
Or what stops you from doing five?
There's nothing that stops me personally, it just gets very expensive. The more campsites you add, the cost initially to put one in is also very high. So four, under, try it out, see how it works. We can always come back, but the cost, and then we have to go down Eagle. To get Eagle approval, that's more time, more money.
What is the Eagle approval for?
So they'll come in and work and look at your whole campsite as a general and then give you guidance. So that's why we went with four is let's try it out. No one's done campsites on Harson's Island, not that I know of at least. So let's try it out, see how it goes because it is a different experience, you're crossing a ferry and before and making the huge investment because 10, 20 campsites could cost a significant amount.
What do you mean Eagle's going to give you a guidance? They should have standards or process.
Yeah, yeah. Like you sign.
What are some of them from four to five to 10?
Like they want a landline telephone. So some are pretty odd. They want certain walking distances. There's one other one that stuck out to me. I think like something about parks and recreation, like our recreation is the water. They wanted a play structure that I noticed, which we have a lot of that opportunity already on the marina.
What is the amp service at each site?
We have 200 amps currently, but we have our own transformers. So DTE.
What would the site be?
Currently, we'll have 50 and 30 amp powers.
50 and 30?
Yeah.
I have a question. What's to stop a camper? I've done a lot of camping in my days. And if we wanted to stay at the campground more than two weeks, we would just jump a site.
Okay.
So what's to stop them from leaving that site and going to the next one and just basically living in there?
Like living at the marina?
Yep, as long as they're moving their camper, that's moving it. So that's my question.
Yeah, yeah. Because then it becomes storage at one point, like they can't just live there for, at one point it turns into storage and they're not actually camping.
But if they leave for a day and then come back, that's not storage. It would be basically living there, am I correct?
Like is there consecutive or?
Like if they stay there two weeks, if they stay there two weeks, they go do something for one day somewhere else and then come back and stay two more weeks and then go somewhere for a day?
Being a, being a private organization, we can restrict the reservations and watch who's booking and see, yeah.
And, and obviously they have to leave if they're not going to be storing them through the winter.
No, no, we're all seasonal only.
This is seasonal, it's spring to fall.
Yes, yep.
Why wouldn't you do them seasonal?
What do you mean?
Why wouldn't you have them there seasonal like?
Like we're not against seasonal, but we want more people to come in because we have boat rentals and other things to offer. The more people that come into the marina, the better it will provide for the other businesses.
So tell me about your, the performance standards for your, why you feel you're exempt from the sanitary part? Is that correct?
So we're on Harson's Island. That house is vacant, does have a septic field. We were just going to do simple temporary bathrooms. You can get a shipping container and then post this shipping container and have ABC pump it out. That makes it very clean, very easy to manage. You don't have to worry about your septic tank getting messed up because we do want to eventually do something with that house being it's vacant and expand there as well.
So a shipping container full of?
A shipping container for the bathroom. It has a toilet, shower.
Public bathroom.
Yeah, yes. Right now we have mostly ABC Commercial and Services. They help us with our port-a-potty and pumping out the waste.
What do you have for your, your boaters? Do you have any kind of pump-out station or anything?
We don't currently. I did bring a picture this time of a honey wagon. This is very similar like Sunset Marina. They do the exact same thing. They pump the waste out. We would have the same setup. In the meantime, we went to the planning board in, I think it was April or May, and they were, they know what, some people didn't know what a honey wagon was, so honey wagon's very common in the marine industry. They bring it, they pump out the waste. Same thing with the RVs. They bring it, they pump out the waste from that camper.
And then what, what happens to the honey wagon?
ABC or a similar septic company comes to the island, pumps it out for you.
Yeah, that's the biggest concern I have is the, no septic system for, for dumping this waste.
Is it?
I mean, it's.
You just put a macerator on the end of that and you just put it in the water around the ground. Then you need a dump station. And that honey wagon's not free.
I'm, I'm sure people don't want to be swimming in waste, so nobody's going to be dumping in the water themselves. Same thing like on the boat, you're not going to be going on the boat and just turning up your pump.
You don't want to move your, you don't want to move your unit to go dump.
This comes right to you, it's on wheels.
No, I know that.
Yeah.
But that's not convenient for the, the people. They're going to have to pay for that.
It could be a bait service.
Most state parks are like, they have a dump station.
Yeah.
Most state parks are moving to full hookups.
We're talking four units.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if four units will be.
It's still 50, 50-some gallons. My, my camper is 50 gallons.
Yeah, but they're only staying two weeks.
Yeah, but it's.
I fill mine up in a weekend.
Yeah.
Well, they're going to have a pump station.
They don't take much to fill up.
I don't think he's going to, I mean, he wouldn't be in business very long, I would guess, if you're going to allow sewage all over the campground.
I'm saying, that's what I'm saying then.
I'm not worried about the sewage in the campground, but I'm, I am worried about it not.
And I'm going to guess that if it smells, people aren't going to be staying, they're going to be leaving. So I'm going to guess that they're going to be working on it.
Yeah, but most campsites are moving to full hookups.
Right.
Or at least the ability to.
Well, this is going to be almost full hookup besides septic. You're going to have water and electric.
Yeah. You're missing a key point though, the septic.
The container. And they also have public bathrooms, so that it can be used as well. So that someone's watching their black water. Careful watching it, you know, he's only staying two weeks.
The container you were talking about bringing in for the, like to replace the port-a-johns to like have the wash station and all that other stuff, is that basically a trailer?
No, it's a shipping container, just on the ground.
Just a shipping container?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that going to be unsightly or?
No, they're really nice. I actually showed Joe already.
That one, yeah.
Is that approved?
It's in the, we're, yeah, we're asking for the temporary bathrooms for the variance. Is there any? We, we.
That's for us?
I have seen these set up, he's probably explaining it very poorly.
Okay.
But I have seen these set up at places that handle a lot of people and they are, they are set up, they are dropped as a, as a unit. They, they resemble a shipping container, but there are men and women sides and you go inside and once you're inside, you wouldn't know it's a shipping container. And then, you know, you know, it's realistically, it's not a bad-looking unit and even from the outside, yes, it resembles a shipping container and, you know, that's something that can be looked at from our zoning aspect, you know, to, to dress it up. If that's something that he wants to keep there permanently, you know, we have regulations that address that. So, you know, make it look like a shed and put a pitch roof on it and maybe we got something.
We knew where that's going to be on the property?
So we are planning it more towards the house to hide it from everyone else. Like we want to make it like look good and not stick out.
So would that, that container, would that actually, if it was a permanent structure, would that be too many buildings on that size of a lot? No, he was talking about making it permanent, eventually.
It's not living quarters.
But I'm talking about.
One of the things we've got to stay focused on is that this is one piece of the puzzle and a lot of this other stuff, if, if you, if you elect to move this forward is, goes back to planning and locations and that sort of thing gets addressed at planning.
Yeah, but they're, they're kicking it back at us to, to give them performance temporary services for sanitary, which we have, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
I, I, I get the lot size, I get the 10 acres, I get the 600 feet coming in front of us, but to, to make us give him permission for a temporary sewer, that's not my comfort zone.
All you've got to say is, no, you're not exempting him from having to provide sanitary.
Okay.
Okay? And then he has to provide it. And then the location of where it's provided will, then the planning commission will take it.
Because there's a couple gray areas in our, you know what I mean? I, I don't want a shipping container like at the middle of the road or, or if they don't want to see it or at the water, you know what I mean? I'm just being honest here, you know? I, I love the idea, I'm just trying to make it work on a smaller piece of property right now.
But the, the shipping container is only one, if they use it, you still have the, the RV to dump, right? What? Well, that has to be dumped out, but it, it's still the concern of the campers to dump. There's no dumping station on here.
Because typically when we leave our campsite, if we ever, you know, before a full hookup or anything, there's a dumping station. We don't travel with that excess weight in our camper at the time when we camped all the time. Currently, we're at a full hookup in Port Austin, I love it. In Caseville, it has the exact same thing that you're doing here. It's a great facility. Chris up there is awesome. I love the concept, but it's a full hookup there too, meaning he has city, you know, the sewage is contained on the water. I mean, we had boat slips. That's what I'm saying, I love the idea. I'm just really concerned with, how many times are we going to have ABC there pumping out for your boats, the, the excess bathroom now, the, you know, the four campers, I don't produce a ton of waste, I get what you're saying and, and I, but that honey thing is not going to be a huge, you'll have to, you'll see that that might not be the best option at, you know, you'll.
Yeah, we, we did.
You may not have the big, biggest tank right there.
We did pursue other options as well. We, we gave options because there's a campground right down the street, Bouvier Bridge, we talked with them. They have public dumping on, so you can drive up to them, pay a fee already advertised and everything and dump there. So we made an agreement to have our customers have that as an option. I believe the state park is an option as well. If you have the sticker, you can go in there and dump.
Not for free though, unless you stay there.
Okay, yeah.
And that Bouvier, that's on, on the island, right?
No, that's off.
That's off the island, yes.
Sewer, city sewer?
Yes, yeah. And they're advertising.
So how are they? Okay.
You can pay a fee and then like there's, the way they work is we made a contract so we can send our customers and they can pay upfront, so they are already good to go, they pull in and, and dump their waste and then move on. Many people don't even want to waste or wait at a campground when they're dumping, so they take, a lot of people, or at least the ones that I've talked to, take their waste home, they hook it up to their own sewer with a macerator and pump it in to their own septic or into their own city sewers.
That's not helping. That, that, that won't help your cause.
Well, no, but I'm just like saying, like a lot of people, there's multiple options for people. It's not just the honey wagon.
So if it gets stopped at Bouvier, who pays it to get it cleaned out? Is it, is that city sewer, right?
Bouvier is paying for the camp, for the pump out station. So we're paying them a fee.
But that's the city sewer?
Essentially, yes.
So they're gonna pay per camper to the city of Ira Township?
I, I don't know any logistics on that. I just talked to.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, we.
They've been doing the city, or they've been doing the pay to dump for the last few years and had no issue, so I'm not sure if there's an issue or that would be an issue.
Well, sure, if Ira Township's paying for someone else's sewage that they're not getting paid for to treat.
They advertise it for the last two years on the try by sign, so.
I'm pretty sure that they have anybody.
So I think it's been a problem already if.
I agree with you, but Ira Township residents have to pay to get that treated, right?
So is the Algonex State Park within that county? Each camper that goes in there and you're not paying the city for each camper that stays at the Algonex State Park?
So.
And that's city water and sewer? You're allowed to go in there and dump?
Yeah.
But Algonex property, septic's. Septic system, tanks.
I, I don't know how that.
I think that's city sewer.
They've gone to full hookups, Algonex State Parks.
Right, they haven't gone to full hookups.
Some of them.
Yeah, some of the lots, yeah. I mean, that's my biggest, one of the biggest concerns is the septic sewer or the dumping.
So if everything goes well and it, you're allowed somehow through us, through the planning, you get your four. You're making a million dollars, would you wanna go bigger?
On campsites? So we actually have a lot of different businesses going on, like we have the marine and boat rental. So like, we have two properties right next to each other. You can only put so many campsites on a property until it becomes unmanageable or like not enough space. I'd rather preserve, I think like the most Michigan recommends is ten per acre. So that would be where we probably cap that.
But you would have to come back and get.
Yeah.
And reset and get a bit of it for an additional.
Yeah.
We could improve for four and then you would have to come back again.
No.
About them.
Well, I don't like.
And this acre, one point five three acres, I mean, that's, I have that much on Harson Island, I could put, put campsites on there?
You're not C three?
Okay, well, I mean, I see these, it's very small, it's ten acres to one acre. I mean, that's a big.
This is our one.
This is C three, right?
It is, yes.
And that's because of the wells?
Yeah, the marina, the boat wells.
I mean, I like the idea, but it's, we got neighbors that, have you addressed any of their issues?
All right, so let's do the buffering requirements. Let's look at that. Front, front side, rear side setback shall be at least eighty feet, it says. And this is off of Gary's review, okay? So existing setback, side yard from the water or high water mark is fifteen feet. Lot line fifty-two feet. Rear yard from high water mark, twenty-two feet, lot line a hundred and five feet. Gary, are you counting the lot line in the water or are you counting a seawall?
I specified the high water mark.
Yeah.
Where that.
And that lot line into the water?
Is the extent.
Okay, thank you. Front yard setback is greater than eighty feet. So we're okay in the front. The rear is water, correct, Gary?
That's correct.
And that is to the first unit, site one? Is that what you're taking that from? Where it's proposed, site one?
Yes, site one is in the front. Or the rear of the property.
Correct. Next to the house?
Yeah.
So you're asking for, my math is bad, sixty-eight feet? Fifty-eight feet? Variance?
Does that sound correct, Gary?
Fifty-eight?
Or, say that again, I'm sorry.
So the side yard setback is?
So they, the front side and rear yard shall be at least eighty feet.
Right.
So you need eighty feet all the way around. So if we're, I always measure your required yards from high water mark. So you can look at property lines, but when we're measuring for setbacks, we're always measuring from the high water marks.
Or a seawall?
Correct.
Okay.
So that's the high water mark.
Yep, yep, okay.
Seawall, high water mark.
Yep.
So that's where, that's why I specify that in darker is fifteen feet. So that's where you get your requested side yard setback variance of sixty-five feet. And the rear yard variance of fifty-eight feet, because you need eighty all the way around.
Right.
And the front yard is greater than eighty, so that, that was, that was okay on the front. And front and street side.
Is it?
You're pretty close to the, what is it, another marina next to you where the gas docks are?
Yeah, it's the same, Marina together, same business.
Same, right? And then from where the cottage is, it's a little bit over, but it's not connected.
The store?
Yeah.
Or the other vacant house?
The other vacant house?
Yeah, they're separated by a good distance.
Would you say two hundred feet?
The store and the gas dock or the vacant house and the gas dock?
I would say the, okay, cottage that's over there next year, next one year.
Yeah, how far is that from what building?
So I'm just, it's not obstructing any view for them as far as water?
No, yeah, it's not, it's behind, next to the house.
Right.
So if we push those through, what's to stop all the other marinas from doing it?
Well, they have to come in for a variance.
But do we want all of them doing that?
Well, it has to.
There's a lot of marinas over on the island. There's like, I know of at least four, I think, or five.
Well, Sherry, that's why, that's why the planning commission didn't wanna do like use.
Right.
That's why, you know, that's why they're here. Because they didn't wanna do the like use, because that's what they were fearful of. Is that it would just be overrun then, that every marina would be stacked in the middle with, with RVs. So that's, that was a way that they'll, they'll still have to do the planning commission and still have to work out all the other things. But dimensionally, if they don't have the ten acres, they don't have the six hundred feet, that's where they would have to come before this board for consideration. And, you know, one may not be the same as the other. So, you know, it's gonna be an individual decision. How much of this will happen, I don't know.
Right.
But, you know, we will see a lot more because, you know, when we talk about recreational use, you know, we have, we have a big interest with RVs and RV parks. And this falls underneath that same thing and putting, and I don't wanna get off topic, but putting marinas aside, we still have a lot of RV interest. Where people have got these RVs and they want someplace to put them. And a lot of them, either you put them at the state park or what do you do? You know, with the price of fuel and maintenance on these very, very expensive vehicles, people just want a place to be able to put them. And, you know, there's some places, but by our ordinance, it doesn't meet ten acres. It doesn't meet these things. So, you know, there's gonna be a need and even, even though it's not marinas, we may see some other RV interests come before this board that don't meet this same criteria of ten acres that we should probably listen to. But this is kinda maybe unique, probably more unique than we'll see other marinas wanting to do the same thing. But we may see more RV parks wanting to establish something to open up a place for people with the RVs to be able to put their vehicles.
Well, how did the person next to the ferry that, you know, the new fence area that took all that RVs, how did that fall differently than?
Back in the day?
Is that how, is that how, what?
Anything was.
Okay, no sense, I get that. So you guys, on the site requirements, ten acres, there's nothing we can do with this ten acres. We can't grow his land, in my eyes. Variance request for the side yard, he can, he can meet his side yard at this point, he can meet his rear yard, he already meets his front yard. He just chose to put those campers, in my eyes, differently. And he could park them in the middle of the property and probably get all his setbacks. And I think you guys know where I'm at on the septic performance standards. Not what he wants, but he can move forward and maybe come with a different plot plan and everybody, he can fight his way through the planning on it. But as far as letting the planning, you know, have us to say, yeah, let, you know, put it up on the ZBA, I don't think we have the. There's no hardship for him to move those campers to the, to this existing gravel. You know what I'm saying?
Sure, there's nothing.
And I love the idea, I wanna, I wanna help as much as I can, but there's no reason why you can't just stack them all right here. And it's, it'd be a lot better than fifteen feet off the setback. Versus eighty. Yeah, I mean, we want eighty and that might change, you know what I mean? If this becomes a big popular thing, but in the same token, I think he can move it over. There's no reason besides he wants to move it where we're at, fifteen foot. Versus eighty. I mean, he's required eighty and he's asking for a sixty-five foot variance on the side. And is that obviously your side? Of course it is. This, obviously, I love the, you know, I'm sure this campsite number one is gonna have the best view. But I don't know where the porta john semi thing's coming, you know what I mean?
But didn't you say the campsite number one's on the other side?
But I'm just saying that this can move back, you know what I mean? I don't know where that, what is that container thing going?
There's an existing container on this side by the, by the.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I'm just.
When you pull in.
But it won't be if it's on a new plot.
Yeah, he's gonna have to get it.
You know what I mean, the planning won't let that sit.
You know what, I'm not mad about the septic, pretty much. I'm kind of mostly concerned about making sure the sanitation is correct. But as far as where those set, I'm not.
Am I able to comment on the neighbors as well? Cause I didn't know you guys would be upset and I didn't have any notification of the letter or anything. All I know is they're, they're, they use it as a day house, so like they come and go, very little. And then like the marina's been in business for a very long time, operating as a business. And we're just trying to grow and make it, area, a little bit better than what it is. Like, it's a vacant lot, very little.
Yep.
So like, we're trying to improve it and make it better and invest the money into it.
Yeah, no, I, I, like I said, I love the idea. I, I love the idea, you know, it's just, I think there's a couple, I'll give him a second, he'll have to stand up. You know, I just feel.
You gotta start off with, wouldn't you?
He's gotta start off with, exactly, I totally agree.
You can always move it. I mean, some.
Do you have something that, to?
Yeah, I don't think that I would say. One thing, one thing, I'm never quite, actually, I'm never quite, a lot more.
Actually, you didn't speak earlier, so you gotta, I'm sorry, you gotta come up. And I'm only doing this cause there's not anyone in the crowd and.
Appreciate it, my name's John Gerchoff, seven six five zero, Middle Channel Drive.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm there all the time. I mean, I was there just two days ago, I'm there probably three or four times a week during the summer. My concern is, you know, that septic that they want, well, I'm assuming it's gonna be between the house and the canal. And then you're gonna have those three trailers, that's one thing, they're not gonna have view of the, of the river. And the other thing, there's, you know, right now, and I understand he wants to make money, you know, I want him to make money too. I want him to be successful. Thought the Minnix were great, you know? They have a lot going on, they had their boats that they rent out, they got their overnight, the thirty foot boats that they, there's two of them that they can rent out for the weekend or whatever. They got the gas docks, they got the, outside they got where they can sell hot dogs and hamburgers and that. They got the store inside, they got the bait shop, they got the boat, fishing boats they can rent out. They got, I don't know if you still got the kayaks and paddle boards and all that other stuff. And, I mean, they got a lot going on. And, and with this lot, now is that whole one point five three acre gonna be the campground? Or, cause right now it's, you know, a lot of trailers, boat trailers. So is that just for campground now or is that, you can park boats? There's, on the once canal, it's just all boat, boat docks where, you know, they can rent them out, you know, rent out wells.
I mean, it's a marina, so I'm guessing that you're gonna see trailers and.
Right, I understand, but I'm just trying to figure out if this is gonna be a campsite now or recreational? Or is it that whole one point five three acres, is that?
Well, right now he's got, he can only have four sites.
And what happens if there's five? Let's say someone, buddy wants to come and he has a trailer, RV two, so now you got five there. Now certainly you have.
There won't be any hookups for the fifth camper at this point.
But you could have.
That's what is proposed right now. There's no hookups for any additional besides four.
You're saying he's got four and then now he starts bringing people dry camping in and.
Yeah.
Well, any marina.
Well, there's no difference if you have a camper at your house either, you know what I mean? I don't.
Any marina then, you know, wants to stop anybody from having a campground in their yard, you know, it's just.
I mean, if you're gonna allow them to put these, at least maybe put them on the other side, you know, so we don't have to, you know, look at them, you know, gonna be right there.
Well, our ordinance says eighty feet.
Put up something to block, you know.
No, I get you, our ordinance says eighty feet, that it has to be away from, we'll say, high water or seawall.
Right.
Okay?
I mean.
So that's one of the variants he's going in front of right now for it.
Right. And I, these variances are there for a reason, just to let it slide. I mean, if it's a ten acre rule, it's a rule, there's a reason for the ten acres. If there's eighty foot setback, there's a reason for that. You know, just to grant him, you know, that, cause you, you know, to improve his business, you know, I think it's the wrong reasons. You know, there's rules you have to follow, I think we should follow the rules. You know, otherwise, if you make exception for him, you have, you have to make exceptions for everyone else. If someone else comes in with a one acre, two acre or three acre for it, you gotta give them, you would have to give it to them.
Well, you don't, but.
No, no, but most likely, if, if he gets it, other people should, should be able to get it too, if they have the same. too, if they have the same situation or similar situations, so...
Always got to be a first.
Always got to be a first, yep.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I have a question.
For? Us, okay?
Yes. Basically, it says, they're asking for the, their actual variance request is asking for, to be exempt from the standard. Basically, they're asking you to exempt from the sanitary.
Right.
I guess I can't help you to...
Correct.
So that if, if we make it exempt, if we pass this, does that mean they do not have to put a container in because they're exempt? Or does that mean...
They don't have to have a septic field, or...
A septic field, just a septic field?
To take, to take that.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand.
They're still going to have to do something with their...
Yeah, you can't just dump, just because we, you can't dump your sewage.
Right, it just basically says exempt, so I didn't know what, what that was. Does that mean exempt from everything, or do, to do with the sanitary, or is that just exempt from the septic field, is what I was asking?
I think it's for the...
I would say it's exempt from everything.
Well, for the, for the sanitary part.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you read it, it just basically says they want to be exempt from everything because RVs have their own toilets.
Yeah, that's, that's not true.
They're, they're asking us to approve that.
Do we have anything in our ordinance that says anything about campgrounds? Anything, I mean, these are the three that you saw. Do we have any additional information that we should be looking at for why he wants this to be exempted, or is there any provisions?
I looked through all of the recreation, and, and as far as recreation, I mean, it's larger than this, but these are the only thing in recreation that really pertained to this.
Okay.
So, nothing else really pertained to this situation.
Okay.
And yeah, as far as sanitation, without a doubt, I mean, at St. Clair County Health Department, I mean, that's, that's where that stems from. And then you go to St. Clair County Health Department for their strict regulations as far as how that has to be designed, septic fields, septic tanks, that sort of thing, whatever their containment is when it comes to recreation. So, you know, they're, they're looking for, you know, to be exempt from those strict rules, but whether or not you do, you can, you can pull that back and say, no, we're not going to exempt you from those rules, and let them work that through with St. Clair County Health Department, and say, okay, you know, you tell us what we can do to, to make them happy, and if they say you need to put in a tank, that's the only thing that we're going to allow, well, then that's what he has to do if he wants to be in business.
So why didn't, why wasn't that done first?
Is it possible?
The only reason I, yeah, I mean, exactly, that's what, why, why are we, like, the decision makers on, on it? If there's nothing else, if there's zero options, then it comes in front of us to allow maybe something different because there's zero options left. He exerted everything, there's nothing else.
Something's unique.
As to that question, Brian, the only thing is whether or not, whether or not it's yea or nay, whether or not you're going to say, okay, you can be exempt or not. And, and to me, that answer has been quite clear to me. You say, no, you're not exempt from St. Clair County Health Department. So you work it out with them and clear, clear your thoughts of that portion of it, and say, no, we're, our body, our board is not going to clear you from being exempt from their regulations. And I know that the regulations for, you know, recreational is different than, you know, our own septic systems in our yard. And I won't pretend that I know what those are.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I don't know it either.
But, but yeah, so, you know, if, if there's a system design that he can work with St. Clair County Health Department to come up with something that works for them and that they'll permit him to do...
Perfect.
Then isn't that the right way to go?
Can I ask where it says exempt? Is that in your review?
Oh, it's... Right, on the very bottom of the plan review for ZVA variance request. It's on the very bottom. It says, due to the nature of an RV being equipped.
I, I did get it approved by the Eagle and Michigan already, or Michigan Health Department, that the honey wagon would be the, because we did, my engineer that drew the site plan, reached out to all the health departments beforehand, and they actually recommended us to do the contract first, and then did the honey wagon. That's the reason why we went down the route of talking to local campgrounds, is because they recommended the contract, and then they, I sent them a picture of the honey wagon that I showed you guys, and they approved that as well. I was, I think the exemption was, or the need was the temporary bathroom.
For, what it means, so temporary means like, one day? 10 years?
No, it's not a permanent structure.
Right.
For how long?
My garbage came out of comments that were...
Yeah, yeah, that's what I wanted.
At the planning commission. So that's why I rolled that into my review.
Okay.
So let us, I think you...
Yeah, we're, we're good with that, we're good with that.
If he has documentation...
Yeah, yeah, if the health department says the honey wagon is the way to go.
You have to approve that, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Totally agree with you. Okay, so now we have three things, site, site requirements, okay? He needs 10 acres, he has almost two. I like the idea, you know what I mean? He is a marina, he, you know, it's a, it's still, it's a good, you know, it might be a, an uphill battle for a little bit, but I, I don't see where...
I think we're going to see more of these.
Well, we're gonna, but they're, they're gonna...
I mean, I think it's actually, I'm not saying I'm a guest, I think you're just going to see a lot more unique little pop-ups of these little RVs, because there are a big demand for them.
And as far as the, the next one would be the buffering requirements, which are the front, well, he, he makes it, so it's a side yard and rear yard setbacks that he has drawn, correct, Gary? As he has drawn.
That's correct.
So there's no reason he couldn't move it to where it's 80 feet. And I'm not doing the math. I'm not moving it to the middle of his property and saying, hey, we can give him 55 feet. His engineer would have to, to do that. I think he would be a lot better than 15 foot from the side yard. Does that make sense? Does that make sense, saying that right? I think if he moved those to the middle of the property and then told me a dimension from the side yard, that's as big as it can go.
Is there a reason why you didn't do that?
My only concern is them getting a camper in, so we have to have a designated spots for them to back in, and that open spot in the middle is needed for them to get the camper in the spot safely with being next to them other.
Can't you make it a pull-through?
Is that your practical difficulty?
It would be, it's, it would be very, like campers can't just make a turn like a car, so I think it would be very, they'd be hitting each other and then causing damage.
But, that's why we require 10 acres.
Yes, and...
So what I'm saying to you is, you've got to have an expert driver that gets it in there, you know what I mean?
A typical campground is more than four campsites.
Hundred percent.
You can normally go 20, 30, 40.
Yep.
This is for four campsites, so that's why...
I understand, I understand.
And so you have to...
You got another question?
The rear, so...
Did you just do a public comment?
No, no more public comments. Average, the, the, so the acreage is the acreage, that's number one vote, okay? Number two vote is the setbacks, okay? That's number two. Or whatever you guys want to agree on. And then the third one is, we'll just say performance standards for the sanitary stuff, okay? So when we do a motion, let's do one at a time, and we'll vote on it, and then we'll go to the next one.
And you do realize that we're missing one, one board member that has a vote as well,
okay? Three, three votes, okay? For a yes. Okay, so to keep the meeting going, let's, let's do number one, site requirements. Is anyone willing to do a motion to grant him or deny him? Well, actually, if we just deny him, we're done.
Right.
Right, Gary? Right, yeah. And that's pretty much, I think, what the planning is like, all right, if we let it go, then they'll put their own criteria on, on the 10 acres. Correct.
Right.
And as far as the landscaping, the, the trees, the, the stuff that would go between, that's not us, that's all planning, that's all, you know, I'm not saying no gentleman's agreement by no means, but the planning will dictate the, the other requirements. Okay, we're only looking at stuff that he's doing today. And I see an uphill battle, but I, I see it, it's, I see it could go with expert drivers. All right, so let's go with the number one. Is anyone...
I'm going to make a motion to approve the 1.53 acres. Let's see. This is number one, second requirement, with allowing for the minimum land of only 1.53 acres, so acreage, yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Four spots.
Okay, for just the four?
Yeah, this is just the small acreage for the four campsites. Yep. Did I say that right? For the four campsites.
I don't want to call it a campground, but we're, our ordinance says it has to be 10 acres to have a campground.
It's not campground.
It's not a campground, he's asking for four campsites at this point.
And a, and a...
And he does not have 10 acres.
Right.
If we say no to this, we're done today.
Well, the requirements, camp, says campground.
Correct.
Yeah, not four, not four sites, it says 10 acres for a campground.
So what dictates a campground?
10 acres. Somebody wrote that requirement.
Is there a minimum sites for a campsite, or a campground? Is that in our ordinance to make it a campground?
600 feet.
Wow, a frontage, which is definitely going to be close to 10 acres. So if someone owns 10 acres, can they make it a campground with one camper? Just throwing that out there right now.
Right now, it's just for four campsites.
I just, what I'm trying to say is, I think 10 acres is excessive for a campground that's for four campsites.
Only for four campsites, I know, that's what I'm trying to say as well. We're only asking for four campsites, he's not asking for five, he's not asking for six, it's just four campsites. An existing, in an existing, moving out.
Should also probably include the, the width, that 600 required, and 250 is...
Yeah, so it's, it's the 10 acres, the minimum lot width in our ordinance, it says 600 in our...
600, and we're allowing for the lot width of 250.
So the variance is 7.14, they calculated that so fast, and 350 on the lot, that's what Gary wrote right here.
The variance is for some...
The request, correct.
Right, but this is for, again, they're not asking for four campsites. If he wants five, he's got to come back.
And, and just, what is the original, oh, it is 250. That's not even, that's not even the wa, that's including the water. No, no, no. Gary, come here for a second. Yeah. I want to know what this measurement is, 250, but this is the lot size.
Yeah.
You know, you know what I mean? I mean, max lot size, was it say, you know, seawall to seawall, or, you know, high water to high water?
I use that for setbacks.
Okay.
But I need to use that number for property width.
For this?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, he owns it on the land right here.
Yeah.
Is it a pie shape?
I think you're okay to use that as...
The 250, okay.
...for that, setbacks are different, lot covered was, and, I mean, he still owns that property, that's still the size of his property.
Yep.
Where that's more, we're worried more about that, is setbacks, apparently not so much.
Yeah.
So he still owns this property, whether it's on the...
Well, it's tagged right here, I mean, this is land, so...
So, so you're okay with that.
Okay, all right. So do we have a second to approve this site to be, what does it say? A campground, for lack of better words, with four campsites allowed on it?
Because, you know, you have to remember, the person's island is very unique, it's filled with wetlands, there's not a lot of opportunity of 10 acres to do anything there. So, you know, we kind of have to have, give a little, you know, for that area. It's mostly wetlands over there, so, so I like the uniqueness of it.
So it's a 10 acres and a minimum of 600 feet, and he has 250 currently. Do we have a second for this motion? Okay, let's go the other way. Okay, do we have, do we have a, do we have a, do we have a motion to deny it? If we're not going to accept it, we have to deny it. Well, we don't have to, but someone has to put a motion out there to be voted on.
I'll make a motion to deny it, we don't have, there's not enough, the standard is 600 feet, and we have, or it's, yeah, 600 feet and we have 250 feet.
Okay?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. This is why we always need five people. This is, this is a number one reason right here. Okay, so we have a motion to deny, and a second to deny. Roll call, please.
Um...
I'm last.
I know.
Go first, yeah, go first.
If I say...
So if you say no, you're against their motion.
Okay. Margie Ferris is no. Carla is absent. Joe?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
And Brian?
No.
It can be 14, too.
Do it again. This is why we need five, this is why we need our alternates, wherever the camera is. You know what I mean?
I'm going to make a motion to approve this again, so it's only, again, let's keep in mind, we're talking four campsites, I know it's going to be 10, 10 acres is the standard. We're only talking four campsites. 10 acres is many more campsites, so it's...
So it's kind of like a...
So, I'll help her defense. Besides the four, if we say no, it's dead in the water, his project is done. Until he goes in front of the planning and however else and maybe comes back in front of us for a variance that maybe they allow something. I'll just be honest with you right now, I'm not in favor of any of the other ones, okay? I don't like his setbacks. I think he can make adjustments. And I do not obviously like the sanitary, you know what I mean? He already has that answer, so perfect, it's off of our plate. He has a lot of hoops to jump through. He has a lot of hurdles to do. I still think that he should be able to see if he can do those hurdles. And we still have to say yes or no to the other two.
Still has to go through planning as well.
But I agree, 10 acres is 10 acres. But you know, I don't agree with all of our ordinances that, I think some of our ordinances that our grandpas, great, 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 grandpas did and grandmas did, might need to be updated.
Especially for the most popular meantime.
I'm just saying, might have to be updated.
Do we know when the 10 acres was? No, okay.
Nobody does. That's the problem. Even our planning, there's no record of when it was ever done that we probably have. And I'm just saying, I, I'm not...
I see many campsites, by the way, when I drive down M29. They are not 10 acres, I assure you. Especially ones in their haven I've seen on the water. Those are not 10 acres.
I do know the one in Port Austin that I stayed at for the year. Summer months only, on the water, with a boat well. It was not 10 acres. It was city sewer, city hookup, I mean, it was full hookup, it was everything. It just was not 10 acres. Not saying other communities, this is, you know, a first. And yes, we might have a barrage of other marinas, but it's better than someone sleeping in their car. They sleep in their boats right now. I mean, why not have a million dollar camper or a $10,000 camper or a pop-up to enjoy it? Have an additional space for, you know, company to live. Let's face it, you can't have a second home everywhere. A camper is a cheap option to a second home. I mean, waterfront properties are expensive. This is just that, you know, I don't want to hurt waterfront properties, but in the same token, this is an avenue that someone else that might not be able to enjoy waterfront properties or can't get into the state park because it's hard. They can enjoy a boat ride and no more than 14 days here. That's my... If it dies here, it dies here. That's fine. But it's just going to go into the next meeting when we have five people.
Maybe we should maybe put it off until the next meeting.
Nope. This is the punishment that we get. Either we agree to keep going or it's done. He kind of had an option, he said, well, you know, he could have, if there was only three of us here, I would have definitely told them to hold off. But this is what we, this is what we average, four people at our meetings. I've been begging for years to get five alternates.
Finally full.
I get it. Thank you. I'm just saying, it's not, it's not this...
This isn't a runaway train.
I don't think it's a runaway.
This isn't going to be a runaway train. This is seriously four campsites.
Now I see why the planning threw it back at us. Because if it dies right here, right now, they don't have to worry about anything, they don't have to waste their time. They're going to have their hands full if it goes past number one. Just to make the right moves. I don't know what to say for them. I don't know. So we don't have a second for Margie's. So I'm gonna second the motion. And it's my last heartfelt thing.
Margie Ferris, yes? Joe?
No, no.
Sherry?
I'm so torn. Completely torn. A lot. I mean, just like what I was talking to you about when I first came in. I mean, here, yeah, here, I, here's somebody that has their own property with four acres. They don't want anybody to put a camper, but then you want to have campsites put at a marina.
But he's already, it's a first situation. He's already a...
A C3.
I get it, I get it.
A commercial property.
But here you have your own property and you just want a relative, relative to stay in it and be able to get up and go hunting or whatever, and they don't want my camper over there. So it's kind of torn. It's like, that's why I said, I don't...
Yeah, but it's not, it's not... He can do it, you can't do it. Situation is totally opposite.
I get it. I get it, but it's not meeting requirements. It's got so many, I understand, business needs to grow. I understand a lot of... It's just, there's so many things that are off. I mean, there is no...
So hang on, so we're only voting on one thing that's off. Obviously 10 acres and the minimum
Requirements.
Requirement of, not setbacks right now, this is, this is only 600 foot, foot, frontage, and he has 250 and a total of 10 acres, and he has one, one point something. I mean, if you include the water, it's two something.
Campsites. It's not like a regular 10 acre parcel where there would be...
I think, why can't the planning commission work on that requirement then? At 10 acres?
Correct.
Why do we have to...
It's not something that should come before them.
I can't see...
Because we're the only ones that allow them to break the ordinance.
Yeah, I know, I understand that. That's why, that's why I see this big, big gap. 10 acres to 1.5.
And this is, like I said, this is the first that I'm aware of, of this.
I get it.
And this is going to happen in every...
If I can intervene, Joe, just so that you know, that the, that the planning consultant is, I looked at some verbiage that they are discussing that 10 acre in, in that recreational.
Okay.
They're discussing that right now, and that's going before the planning commission. So they are looking at that piece to try to narrow that to a smaller number, just so that you know.
Yeah.
Well, because obviously...
Because there is this need for, for this type of thing, so...
We have relatively a resort town.
Also, I see neighbors here that have concerns.
100%.
So I take that into...
But they bought by the marina anyway, so they're gonna have that, right?
I understand.
And I want them to have their peaceful life, 100% agree. I don't, you know what I mean? And we're not even talking a view. I'm not, I, you know what I mean?
Right.
The additional hustle and bustle, I get the additional traffic, I get, you know, I'm, I'm... It does come with concerns, you know? But at campgrounds, I don't care if it's private or not, I'm pretty sure you can't have fireworks. I don't know what you're going to do with fire because, you know, I guarantee you, I probably, if I was on the planning, it wouldn't be any fires, open fires in this small of an area. Especially when we have, you know, boats pretty close by, ashes, this and that. We all have ordinance, you know, a nose, a nose, noise ordinance, so, I mean...
It's all going to go through planning.
I get it. And I'm not trying to say, hey, there's more things, but there's some stuff that, on a small piece, if we allow it, that I think would be a little stricter on certain aspect of the design. And say no, we're not trying to pressure you by no means.
Basically, two acres, basically, at the most, of dry land. And it's supposed to be 10. I understand they're supposed to be changing or looking into changing the 10 acres. But it just seems, it's such a big gap.
We're only talking four campsites.
But, but, but the whole thing is, what is the rules on that? And what makes it a campsite? And what makes it...
We don't have that. That's why I already, already add. So I'm just gonna go by 10 acres and throw, you know, I'm gonna have a campground. I can have one camper. There's no rules on it. That's what I'm saying, though. Can't have vacant, can't have a camper on vacant land, right? Well, 10 acres and above, now it's a campground. You know, just saying, there's... Shoot, or you just buy 10 acres and put a cell tower on it and you're done.
Cell tower.
You allow that. That can fall on somebody.
State Michigan recommends 10 sites per acre. So that's where the state comes in at.
Oh.
They recommend it or they require it?
On their website it says recommend. It doesn't, you probably get more approved, but they said 10 is recommended per acre.
Man, if this was 10 acres, we'd have 100 over there. Imagine the neighbors we'd have here now?
Some who are put that requirement together.
Well, what I'm saying is, is...
That's what I'm saying.
You know, that state of Michigan, that they do it every day, we, our grandpas and grandmas did it 100 years ago, they made this ordinance. So... No pressure.
There's pressure. Oh, man.
Talk it out. If you don't talk it out, I don't want to hear later, oh, well, if they would have done this, then, you know, I would have allowed it. Can't go off your personal stuff, because trust me, I'm coming in here, I got seven acres and a house.
No, I'm looking at that small a lot. It's just so small. And I know you're saying four campsites, but he's, he's even saying, how are they going to turn their camper around? It's that small that you can't turn your camper? I mean, you should be like...
I can drive all the way around that hole into your house.
I get it.
Backwards with my camper.
I get it, but it, he, come right out inside of himself.
Trust me, every...
That they couldn't put it in the middle because it would be hard to park it. You can't do a drive-through because it'd be hard to...
Well, that's because he's defending that situation. And he'll defend that, hey, I just want it in the middle, they'll learn how to park. That's not, I mean, the setbacks, it's, I agree, I wish it was bigger. I'm just allowing him to go through to see if he can get it to what the planning would allow him to do. He's not going to go through these two other ones. I will not vote yes for these two. But I will vote yes because I want him to see if he can make this work. And if he has to come in front of us again for a variance and say, well, I'm only saying me, Brian, I can't go 80 feet, I can only make that camper 50 foot from this lot line, 50 foot from that lot line. That's the best I can do, that's a variance. He has a practical difficulty right now to put it at the 15 foot. But the problem is that he's creating that practical difficulty because it's not 10 acres to turn around. But what if our grandpas and grandmas said five acres? Now we're only looking at, you know, we don't know what they were thinking because we don't have the ordinance. We don't have their notes of what, how they discussed the situation. I would love to know how many 10 acre parcels we have in Clay Township.
C3s?
I guarantee you, we don't have many. And I know we don't have many, you know, C3s that could do this.
And especially on islands.
I mean, honestly, I mean, what, I mean, it's a... Better than... Well, but if it dies here, it doesn't go in front of the planning board, it goes a totally different direction, then he's got to change some stuff. I'm not saying that it's out of the loop out of here, we're not
So what happens if I do vote no? That'd be a tie again?
And he'll probably change one word in this whole thing and come in front of us and hope that we have an alternate or maybe two alternates where Carla would be at the meeting to maybe get that extra vote. That's why five is so important. And it's not just for his case. They, they could vote no, and it's done right now. We don't have to speak. But we don't have that. We don't have that, the township, you know, we don't have five people here. Can't make every meeting, I'm not blaming Carla in any way, shape, or form. I'm not blaming the, the current board, I'm not blaming the old board. I've been begging for one other person. And this is the exact reason. Seldom have we ever like split down the middle. And we need a tiebreaker, and usually on the tiebreaker, you know what I mean? That's why I vote last. But in the same token, if you say no, then it would be up to him if he wants to pursue going up, you know, Anthony, right? Anthony, to keep pursuing this. Or change something and maybe come in front of us and say, hey, I listened to what you guys are saying. This is our new drawing. It's on CAD. His engineer can move it around a little bit. For free, though, I get it, but I'm just saying, it can be done. But do not vote no because you can't do it at your personal property.
No, it's not, not nothing to do with that.
I'm just saying, that, that would make me that.
No. It's just the idea that...
Because Gary doesn't let me get away with anything at my house.
And if the state of Michigan says 10, 10 sites per acre, I mean, that should have something.
I'll let you speak in public. I'm getting tired once, we need to. I want to see if you can beat three minutes. You did last time, it was good. What just happened? What just happened? Who is he?
It is, it is. It's just...
And he already has it approved through your solicitation.
He has done his homework. He just has a little bit more homework to do as far as certain things. And this is exactly the same thing at Cabana Blue, they went through the same thing, a couple hurdles, couple hurdles, couple hurdles. Now we have a great restaurant.
Yeah, it's beautiful. I love the changes. There's not much you can do over there on the island.
Well, these guys, I'm sure are going to stay 14 days and drive their boat. Take their boat, take their camper and go do it again. Port Austin, Kingsville. I mean, the whole thing has, you know, lots of problems like that. Algonquin State Park, everyone loves Algonquin State Park, go to, for some reason, they, everywhere I go, they go, oh, that's the best park ever. I'm like, I lived there at home. So no or yes?
Yes, I guess.
Don't say I guess.
Well, I mean, it's, I'm that torn. I am that torn. It's like, and it's not because of my own personal stuff, it's, the lot size is just that much different than what the ordinance says. I don't know when the ordinance was even brought in, but there was one there for a reason. And I haven't, I haven't been online to see whether the state said 10 or not, if it was required, a requirement or a suggestion per 10 acre lot, having that many sites, I don't know. But that's, that's why I said I guess, because the next two things and the planning can figure it out, I guess.
Well, you know, we're here.
No, you gotta make a...
I get it.
If that's a struggle for you.
Right.
You're on the zoning board of appeals, working for breaking rules.
Right.
Okay, so to say you're stuck on the...
I am stuck on it because, I mean, not everything's cut and dry.
Right.
And, and and it's just, like, I'm on that border, like... The requirements and what's there just seem so distant. Like I said, go ahead and pass it.
Don't make me feel guilty.
I'm not making you feel guilty, I'm just... Like you said, I mean, it's, the planning will have to figure it out and they'll change what they can change.
He's not done coming in front of us, I'm guessing. He's not done coming in front of us, I'm guessing.
Actually.
What does it say?
It's actually fifteen sites per acre. According to Michigan. They squeezed it there, and some more sites. Are you a yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
No. So, so you're a yes, a hundred percent, no doubt.
I just.
I don't wanna, I'm not gonna sit there and dwell on it. Go to the next one.
I'm not, let's move on.
Okay, so we're gonna say yes to this, so.
We still have another.
We still have two more. Now, the next ones are the buffering requirements, which is the side yard setbacks, the rear yard setbacks. He makes, at the current stage, he makes the front yard setback. So the side yard is a sixty-five foot variance, and the rear yard is a, did I do that right? Rear yard is a fifty-eight foot variance. And this is as drawn, right, Gary?
Correct.
Okay.
Make a, make a motion to not approve, since it's a self-created issue.
Okay, we have a motion to not approve. How do I wanna write this? We'll just say twenty dash, or twenty point four three point two buffering requirements. His current, like, what, his current setbacks that he proposes on this?
Yeah, on this.
On this plot plan, you're denying.
Denying, yeah. They said it is self-created.
Correct. And, and a second. I'm trying to let you rate those notes. You gotta do roll call.
I know.
Okay.
Okay. Margie Ferris, no. Carla, absent. Joe?
Yes.
Sherry? And Brian?
Yes. So that motion is, or that motion carries. The setbacks are denied. Do you need any time?
No, you can keep going.
Okay, so the next one is performance standards. It has to deal with the sanitary facilities. What was written in the paper for that? All sanitary facilities shall be designed and constructed, okay. In each of the RV equipment is self-contained, so he thinks it's, petitionaries request an exempt from the.
So it's the same as what he was saying, correct?
I'll make a motion to deny, because he says that he already spoke to them, and they already had a plan, so there's no reason for them to be exempt.
Well, let's, let's be a little bit more on that one.
Just because they're self-contained doesn't mean they can be exempt.
There we go.
Because he needs facilities to dump. What are those facilities? I don't know. But we can't make, we can't allow them to be exempt from St. Clair County Health Department.
So I worded it wrong.
Yeah.
Let me, Gary, let me just clarify this last performance standard, okay, with you, for our motion. We are not, I'm, I'm speaking for Sherry, I guess, we are not denying that he can't have sanitary facilities. Or are we saying he can have sanitary facilities? How are we wording this? I want him to have, and be able to have sanitary facilities.
We're, we're just not exempting him from twenty point four three point three.
Okay. So he still can pursue.
Basically says that all sanitary facilities shall be designed and constructed in strict conformance with the St. Clair County Health Department. That's what that standard says. So if he has something from Michigan, or whoever, that says that they meet that standard, fine.
Perfect, okay.
Okay, so motion to deny that standard.
So this isn't just the temporary stuff, is what I'm getting at? So that might be an avenue he could pursue, that's not saying, okay, that's what I'm getting at, okay. He's just not exempt from the standard.
From, yes, from that standard.
So your motion is to deny the variance of being, making them exempt.
Exempt from the forty-three point three performance standards, right? Is that what we're saying?
Correct. And a second, correct?
Yes.
Second. You ready?
Um, yes.
Roll call, please.
Margie, I would say yes. Carla's absent. Joe?
Yes.
Sherry? And Brian?
Yes. Okay. All right. So Anthony, you heard, as she's writing these up, and you can leave however you want right now. You heard all of our concerns and stuff like that, just.
I think the last one was Ms. Drew.
That's what I was trying to clarify, but we're not making you exempt from it, so you can still pursue that avenue, is what I, what I was left out of that, okay? If, again, if you gotta come in front of us, then you would have to explain why you're in front of us, again, for any, any other additional variances.
Anthony, if you have approvals from the state of Michigan that exceed what that standard is, any ordinance, then.
That's why I asked that question.
The verbiage that you had stated as the plan was that you were looking for essential stuff. So that's why I called it out in this review. But if you've got something from state of Michigan, or.
No, no, I think that was a temporary structure, that wasn't mentioned, and it was a temp, like, the storage unit or storage container is technically a temporary, like, is temporary building, right? Or now I'm looking at it incorrectly.
Well, I think we're looking at it for temporary, but.
All right, for some reason, we're missing a couple things on my.
Okay, okay, I think I understand.
Oh, here we go, it's on the second page. Okay, yeah. All right, so, yeah, it's, yeah.
It's right here, if you need it.
We'll sign before we leave. Okay, we're gonna go on, there's no additional new business. I don't see anything with unfinished business, besides that we need some alternates. So please, send your resume into whoever. Give it to Amber, Amber, get it to the right person. Uh, report for, from planning commission. So you guys had him, Anthony, in front of you last time, right?
I don't think we were specifically together last time. It's been since, been together since then.
Well, I thought you guys just had this case. I thought this was.
This is, but I already mentioned this in the last.
Yep, you did, yeah, okay. So you haven't had anything new? Okay, so you have nothing. Any other matters reviewed? Do we have to review? Sherry, you know what, we could give you some homework, and you could find that ordinance.
Which one?
Who made the campground ordinance? Good luck.
Yeah. I'm just saying, I don't know how long ago that was, or.
Exactly. So, at least the planning, and they're, they're looking into that right now. Again, all of our ordinances aren't perfect, but one day they will be. All right. Public comment, you're first. You raised your hand before, just say whatever you want now.
I was just saying, uh, property is two hundred and fifty, but when you look at the land, that's not two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, at the road it is, though, at the road it's all solid land. That's what I was bringing up to Gary.
Solid land is not the two hundred and fifty, that's the part that's out in, in the river. The solid land, I think, a hundred and eighty, eighty-six, I believe, on the survey.
It looked square.
Yeah, it's, uh.
Even on the roadside?
Yeah, it looks square, it didn't have.
A hundred and eighty-six there, too, at the roadside, but I know it comes in a little bit, but I know how far the, because there's thirty feet of water on this side. Thirty, probably twenty-five, thirty feet on that side, so you got a minus sixty, or whatever it comes to, off the two fifty. And it's really a hundred and eighty-something. If you look at one of the surveys. I know eight, three had a recent survey, I got my survey in my car. Mine's the same way, I, I own, supposedly own, you know, thirty, forty feet out in the river. But it goes like this, you know, it comes in, now my property's like a hundred and ninety-something feet, a hundred and ninety-six, I think, actual land to land. But if I went way out, there'd be two hundred or something.
Yeah, 'cause it says two fifty on, on it.
Yes.
Land to land, you're right, it is not two fifty, but.
It's not two fifty, yeah.
But it is still, it is still property, like, even though you have property that goes out into the water, it's still your property.
No, I, I.
And, and same thing there, it's still their property.
No.
And so they can, so they can still.
You could fill it in, when it's not under the water, right?
I ordered the property, the land is, like, there's one point five three acres. But it's two point eight six acres, but it's because of the water, so it's, land part is one point five three acres.
Correct.
Same thing with the two fifty, it's really one eighty-something, one eighty-six, or whatever it is.
But that's where the difference is, you know, the property is two hundred and fifty feet wide, even though the land isn't that wide, it's still, their property is that wide. And that's why, that's why.
You're just getting water out of the water.
Yeah, but that's why, it's still their property. But that's why when we're talking about setbacks, we go by high water, or seawalls, and that's where, we don't count what's out into the water, then. That's why we count in, where's the seawall? And that's where we're not counting that, we're counting fifteen feet from the seawall. So that's where that benefit is, but, but you still get credit for owning that property, that's still to dimensions of your property.
Yeah, 'cause what, what is it from the seawall to the center, to his property? I mean, that variance wouldn't have been fifteen foot, it would've been.
Yeah, I think I.
Or, or, you know what I mean? 'Cause that's why I asked you, 'cause that's why I brought him up here to say, hey, this, at two fifty, I guess he still owns it, but with the setback, I know you do it. I mean, you explained it to me, that's why, oh my God, I just broke my pen.
Yeah, I mean, from the side property line, if I, if I went from the property line and measured that out into the water, he was fifty-two point five feet per wet, and, you know, eighty foot was required, but we didn't count that. We went from.
The high mark.
The high water mark, which was only fifteen feet. So he got benefit of the two fifty, because that's the size of his lot, but he didn't get any benefit, what's in the water, without setbacks. So, you know, you gotta, gotta look at it both ways. So he's not, he's not able to park that close to the edge of the water, because all setbacks are rendered from high water mark.
Okay, any other public comments? I got you.
Good evening, zoning board. I'm gonna ad lib this. I only have three comments. First, I wanted to thank the zoning board personally. The way you captured my public comment in the last time, I mean, as a First Amendment activist, I truly appreciate it, and you inspire other people to give proper public comments. I can't say the same thing for the planning commission, I gave a four hundred and forty-six words speech, it got censored down to three words, two of the words I didn't say. That's a ninety-nine point eight percent censor rate, so, that leads me to my, oh, and by the way, the way you operate, I mean, I can't applaud you enough. You talk, you communicate, there's transparency, so, again, from a complete nobody, I, I say, good job, zoning board. In terms of my second comment, in my last time, I said, I inspired people to go to the meeting at Harson's Island, Margie was there, it was a full house. But the video was cut off. The reason the video was cut off is somebody showed up with alcohol, two empty cans in one hand, and beer in the other hand, at a public meeting. And he was assaulting, verbally assaulting, one of the trustees. Now, obviously, the way the board trustee, the supervisor does it, he slips everything under the rug, and I'm not gonna allow that. That was disgrace to America, to allow alcohol in, and allow this guy to be there, and nobody kicked him out. Now, I'm gonna remind you, Paul Cassi is a Haida member, Whitey Simon is the Lions Club president, sat front row, didn't do anything. Harold Bane, Haida Chair, Lions Club member, front row, didn't do anything. Dennis Shemansky, Haida Vice Chair, Lions Club, saw it, didn't do anything. That was a disgrace. And that leads me to my third comment. Margie, as you know, we have a lot of division in this community, as everyone was talking about in the last trustees' board meeting, a lot of the applicants were saying there's division. Now, whenever there's division, what are you supposed to do? You're supposed to have conflict resolution. You're supposed to communicate. The fact that Haida Chair Harold Bane has only had one meeting in sixteen months, his, his bylaws say four per year. His first meeting, four per year. He himself said at least three or four per year, and he hasn't. So when people say that it's conflict resolution, well, who's causing the conflict? The residents want answers. We already had a phase one feasibility study for the ferry, we paid tens of thousands of dollars for it, you can't find that online. So what do we spend the money on? So when people sit there and say there's, there's division in this community, no, no, no. There are residents who want answers. What are we spending the money on? Where's it going? So those are my three public comments, obviously, I live it in, again, whatever you wanna do with these meeting minutes, in terms of my comments, it doesn't matter, I just, again, wanted to thank both you, or all you, just because, like I said, as a First Amendment person, you inspire other people to get up here and give public comments, and you, you let people like me know that we're being heard, so, thank you very much.
Heard you, thank you. Two forty-six. I won't let anyone speak, as long as they're respectful for everybody, that's, you know what I mean, that's why, you know, he he's allowed to speak, so, it is what it is. Okay, so, German.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, now we're not.